Good evening. I'd like to call the order. The Lake Wachem Cooperative Management Program Annual Joint Councils and Commission Meeting for March 23, 2016. We'd like to have the clerk call the roll, please.
John Miller. Curtis Casey.
Here.
Bruce Ford.
Here.
Todd Citron.
Here.
Laura White.
Here.
Todd Donovan.
Here.
Carl Wymer.
Here.
Red Brown.
Yeah.
Barbara Brenner.
Here.
Ken Mann. Sat Paul Sidoo.
Here.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Terry Bornhamon.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Buck Sam Murphy.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Michael Lillquist.
Here.
April Barker.
Here.
Jean Knudsen.
Here. Thank you. The first thing on our agenda tonight is opening comments for the jurisdictions. And first up, we have Mayor Bellingham, the Honorable Kelly Lindvill.
Well, first of all, it's my pleasure to welcome you all to Bellingham City Hall. We're always happy to have a joint meeting here. And I just want to say that I appreciate so much, as someone that worked on the Lake Wachem management plan as a legislator, that since 1992, we've been looking at the lake and how to protect the lake. And the cooperation that I have seen in the last few years, especially with the five-year collaborative agreement that we signed in 1992, in April of last year, is really a wonderful step forward. We all know that if we don't have an integrated plan to work on protecting our lake, that it's just not going to happen. Everybody has to do their part. And the working relationship between the city, the county, and the sewer and water district on this Lake Wachem management plan is excellent. And I'm excited to see the update myself from staff and everybody who's going to present. And I just, again, want to thank you all for the time and effort that you're putting into doing something that I know the citizens of our community and the county really appreciate. So, thank you.
Next up is our County Executive, the Honorable Jack Lowes.
They didn't say honorable when they introduced us. [laughter]
They didn't let me introduce you, so...
Well, thank you, Councilmember Buchanan, and all members of the Lake Wachem Water and Sewer District Board, Bellingham City Council, Wachem County Council, and of course, our guests and staff that are with us tonight. It's good to have this opportunity to be here again this year to talk about the work that the city, the county, and the Lake Wachem Water and Sewer District are doing. We are, as Mayor Lindvill stated, in an implementation phase of the five-year plan that we adopted last year. I'd like to spend just a moment to talk about last year and all of these items. Staff will go into more detail later on in the meeting. But, you know, we undertook phosphorus reduction projects along the North Shore Drive at the bottom of Academy Street, on Huntington and Shepherdson Streets, and at Bloedel Donovan last year. And they add up to meaningful steps towards meeting the forthcoming total maximum daily load requirements that we need to achieve. Also, through focused market research, we've added to our understanding of where and how we should approach the residents of the watershed in order to effectively promote water quality stewardship. The goal, of course, is to encourage and enable homeowners to acknowledge their stake in the watershed. Also, last year, we undertook the Academy Road project that treats stormwater from both the city and the county. The city of Bellingham bought the land. The county built the project, and the city will maintain it. We did stormwater maintenance cooperatively. We entered into an MOU with the city of Bellingham to conduct the maintenance necessary throughout the watershed. And, of course, the aquatic invasive species program was fully integrated to include Lake Wachem and Samish last year. Also, with the homeowners incentive program, the city piloted that program, and I'm pleased to announce that the future program is going to be integrated with the county. The focus in 2016 is going to be the construction of the Cedar Hills Euclid Project. The county was awarded a $660,000 grant for this project, so that's going to be able to augment the project beyond the initial scope that we had anticipated. We're going to... The city of Bellingham is going to design the additional stormwater projects, including East Oregon, East North, and Britton Road. That's a city project for 2016. The county is going to design the Agate Bay Project for 2017 construction, anticipated construction date. And we were recently awarded a $1.1 million grant to augment that project also. So, I think a note that I'd like to make is, for us to have this plan and to get projects in the loop is, we're already starting to see the results of added state and hopefully federal monies coming in. And to do that is, is that we have to have this pre-design work taken care of and have it planned out. But I'm really excited about that. And, of course, the newly focused residential retrofit program is based on that 2015 market study and the last five years of experience is going to give us the opportunity in 2016 to augment that program. So, in summary, our governments remain committed to implementing the aggressive and pragmatic plan that the councils and the commission adopted in April of 2015, and to preserve the shared funding arrangement that will get the work done. Staying the course will translate into real improvements and greater public confidence that the Lake Wachem management plan can and will deliver on the community vision of a clean and protected watershed. The city, the county, and the Lake Wachem Water and Sewer District are directing more local funding to the Lake Wachem management plan than ever before, and have made the long-term commitment to meet the TMDL timeframe once it's finalized with local funds. Outside dollars are accelerating our work to meet the TMDL objectives, and we will continue to pursue grant opportunities. Thanks again for your support of improving the water quality of Lake Wachem. I'm convinced that we're moving forward in the right direction, and I'm very pleased that we have moved from the planning stage to implementation. I'm committed to continue the funding necessary to fulfill our obligations. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Executive Lowes. Next up, the Chair of the Lake Wachem Water and Sewer District Board of Commissioners, the Honorable Laura White.
Thank you. Good evening. Laura White, President of the Board of Commissioners for Lake Wachem Water and Sewer. I get the honor to speak to you tonight since our general manager, Patrick Sorensen, could not be here. Lake Wachem Water and Sewer District was formed in 1968, and we serve the residents around Lake Wachem that are outside of the city of Bellingham service area. The district began a water conservation effort in 2011, and between 2009 and 2014, we saw Southern Valley water usage decrease 25 percent, and Geneva usage decreased 21 percent. In 2015, we increased the cost of our water and created a high-usage billing tier to further encourage our ratepayers to voluntarily reduce their peak water usage. We're working with Southern Valley to support their stormwater projects, and we're coordinating the location of the water and sewer utilities, and at times moving those utilities so we can support their covert replacement in the valley. Lake Wachem Water and Sewer provides financial contributions to support the tributary monitoring, the aquatic invasive species work, and the Lake Wachem management program for a total annual contribution of $65,000. And we look forward to a continued collaborative relationship with the city and the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have staff reports, and we're going to have a presentation. And I've been asked to ask all of you to hold your questions till the end, please, so we can get continuity through the presentation.
Okay, Mark, I pushed the button like you told me. Good evening. We're going to give you some staff reports on 2015 accomplishments, and followed by some 2016 prospective projects, what we're going to do then. Then we have a short presentation on aquatic invasive species funding program. I'm going to go over the report a bit here tonight, what we're going to talk about with the other speakers. What you have here on this slide is you have the 2015-2019 work plan that we all approved last year, and then the face of the 2015 report. The 2015 is the first year of this five-year plan, of course. It has a new layout. It's built around the 10 program areas that we've established in the past. The new layout is hopefully going to improve accessibility, how people can access the information, and highlight, to some, to an initial phase, at least, of highlighting the performance measures that we've been trying to get more accessible to the folks. Wrong way. So, this is a page from the plan, and you'll hear about some of these projects. This is a highlights page. You'll hear about these projects in more detail from Renee, what was accomplished in 2015. It's just a sample of the layout of the plan. This is a page you've seen before. It's a description of the program areas and the objectives that the program areas are This is a sample page from the plan, from the report. It's on land preservation, and you'll see on the right-hand corner there that the performance measures for this program area are highlighted. And you'll see this throughout the plan. It's a quick access to what was accomplished and how much it cost in 2015. Another page with similar layout. Excuse me. This time, draw your attention to the residential projects box down in the left-hand corner. It's another way that you can access information in the report. It highlights some of the, again, some of the metrics that are important to that program area. Boy, I'll get this right. This is the page on cost estimates from the report. You'll see at land preservation, we have staff costs, we have capital costs, and we have other costs, which are supplies and consultant fees and those kinds of things. Another page, education. And you might recall that we broke education out into its constituent areas, as well as we have the education program area number nine, which has those education activities that are sort of watershed-wide. They apply to more than one program area. So, those costs are in the program area number nine. And then stormwater education is included in stormwater. Aquatic invasive species education that's specific to those program areas is included in that. And now we'll have a report on 2015 from Renee LaCroix.
I'm Renee LaCroix with the city of Bellingham. I'm the Assistant Director of Public Works, and I'm in charge of the Natural Resources Division. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the highlights and accomplishments that we made solid progress on in 2015. Whoa. Sorry, the mouse is really touchy. Okay. Sticking with that one, going with this. So, specifically, I'm going to talk about some of the capital projects that we installed, the homeowner incentive program and the aquatic invasive species program. So, this is a zoom-in of the north part of Lake Wachem. You can see Bloedel Donovan Park here, Alabama, goes up to North Shore, and Silver Beach Creek comes in down here. So, the green areas are areas of the watershed that were treated prior to 2015. So, they're places where we've already installed stormwater facilities prior to 2015. And then the yellow areas that I just added are the projects that were installed in 2015. And I'm going to talk through them each one by one. So, the first one is the Academy Road Project. The area outlined in blue is the drainage area, and it drains all the way down to the lake, and it's treated all in one location on North Shore. And this project in particular is a great example of city-county partnerships. With this project, the city purchased the land, the county designed, permitted, and constructed the project, and then the city will maintain the project from here on out. This is a before and after of the actual site. So, on the left-hand side, you can see the property when we purchased it. We took the house down. And then the photo on the right shows after construction. So, that whole drainage area outlined in blue all funnels down to this, and there's a series of complicated pipes that take it down through different filter media and sand filtration, so that by the time the water reaches the lake, the pollutants and phosphorus have been removed. So, the drainage area, 75 acres, were treated, where roughly 40 pounds of phosphorus removed. And when I talk about pounds of phosphorus removed, I'm talking about it on an annual basis. So, we want to see this location removing 40 pounds of phosphorus each year. The next one I'm going to talk about is the Huntington/Shepherdson retrofits. So, this one has three stars to indicate there were three different locations. This is a project that was done in the right-ofways, and there were three areas within the right-ofway where we installed different types of stormwater facilities. So, with all of these projects, each site and location is unique, and so there's a menu of different treatment opportunities you can use in any one site. In this one, we did three different ones. And this is what it looked like on the left-hand side, is what it looked like before, is a gravel road. On the right-hand side is what it looked like after. And you can't see it real well in the photo, but there's a filtration area over here, a modular wetland, and then we have pervious pavement, so three different techniques that we're using there to remove the phosphorus. We have six pounds of phosphorus removed from this project and it treats about 12 acres. The North Shore Drive right-ofway retrofits. This is a series of locations along North Shore Drive. And you can see all the different stars along the North Shore Drive to illustrate that. There's actually a few more of them that aren't on here. This is what it looked like before. So, the area along North Shore was just a grassy swale. And then after, we installed what's called the MFD. It's media... Is that right? Media filtered drain, thank you. And the idea is that the runoff from the road takes all the pollutants from the cars and the oils, and it goes through the filtration system, so it removes the pollutants and the phosphorus before it goes into the lake. And this project, all those stars combined equaled about a half a mile of treatment facilities, and it treats 22 acres and moves about 19 pounds of phosphorus. The last one I'm going to talk about is the Bloedel Donovan improvements. And the majority of Bloedel Donovan improvements went in 2014. There was one piece that we wanted to come back and finish in 2016, and that's the sidewalk. So, the sidewalk, all the rain that hit it would sheet flow right down into the lake. And so, the idea was to come back and retrofit it with these grates, so the water would go into the grates and go into the MFD and then into sand filtration before it went into the lake. And this project treated about six acres, and that's the whole Bloedel project combined treats about six acres, and five pounds of phosphorus are removed again for the whole Bloedel Donovan. Now, we're going to switch gears and talk about the homeowner incentive program. So, we had two goals in 2015, one of which was to provide the ongoing HIP homeowner incentive, AKA HIP, projects, to provide the actual HIP projects where we're going out and designing and permitting on-the-ground projects with residents of the Lake Wachem watershed. The second goal was to learn from what we did in 2011 through 2014 and apply that to what we're going to do going forward. So, up until the last few years, the program has been funded by a grant. And now, we're through the end of that, and we're going to fund the program at the government level, at the local level, moving forward. And so, we have an opportunity to make the program, to change the program and modify it, so it's appropriate and sustainable moving forward, and it meets all of our goals and objectives. But to be able to do that, we needed to send out some surveys and do market research, as Executive Lowes talked about, so that we got information from the people that participated in the program the way it was, when it was a grant program, and we talked to the people, the potential participants, in the future to see what they would want to see in a program moving forward. So, I'll talk about each of these separately. The first goal, we continued to design, permit, and implement projects. So, we designed and permitted 53 projects. We completed 28 projects, and we installed 61 phosphorus-limiting BMPs. And this is a graph that shows the progress that we've made since the program started. So, the orange is projects completed, so this is cumulative. So, we've completed 180 to date. Blue is site visits conducted, so we've completed 238 of those to date. And then the green line is BMPs installed, so 422. And the reason this number is so much bigger than this number is because, what I talked about earlier, that each site is unique and individual, and so it takes multiple BMPs per site to get the maximum phosphorus removal and to meet the needs of the homeowner or the aesthetic that the homeowner is looking for. These are some pictures that show what HIP projects look like, if you haven't seen them. I saw this photo, and I immediately wanted to move to the Lake Wachem watershed. I want my yard to look like that. The native landscaping in the upper left is one element that we like to see in our HIP projects. It's the cheapest and the most effective. There's also the walkway filter pollution, the creek bed filter pollution, and just general landscape rehab. So, it gives you an idea of what they look like on the ground. This slide is talking about where we sent the surveys and when we did the market research. So, when I talk about the surveys we sent out, it's four or five steps above the survey monkey idea, right? So, we hired a professional firm, PPR, to come up and help us craft how we were going to get this information. And they sent out follow-up surveys to everybody that inquired about the program but did not participate, and then the people that actually participated. And those are shown in the blue dots. So, it's kind of faint, but Lake Wachem's here. And then this is the north end. This is a zoom-in of the north end, and all the blue dots here are people that got follow-up And then the red pins are the program design surveys. So, that's the looking-forward survey, where we're going out to potential participants, and we're asking them, what type of program would you be interested in participating in? And you can see the switch from more city-focused, in the blue dots, to a more county-focused, in the red dots. So, the follow-up survey, the surveys that went out to the blue dots, the intent was to learn what worked and what didn't, so we could learn from that and identify barriers to participation, so that we can craft the program moving forward to address those, and investigate attitudes of participants towards the program goals. And then the 600 surveys that were sent out, the program design surveys that were sent out, we were trying to understand more deeply what the barriers and motivators would be with really in-depth questions. And I'll provide you with an example of what those questions looked like. We wanted to learn about effective methods for communication and outreach and explore opportunities to engage shoreline residents. And that last one is key, because the shoreline residents, the runoff from those properties can't be treated through a public system. They can only be treated on a residential level. And so, we were really interested in learning how to engage them and what will work. These are examples of the questions that were sent out in the market research that we did. So, the first one is for the follow-up survey. It's asking, what stopped you from making water quality improvement changes to your property? Check all that apply. And what I'm not showing you here is the long list of potential responses. So, I think it was nine or 10. It was way too much to put on a single slide to have you try and read while we're doing the presentation. But the intent of having that many possible answers was to really drill down and find the nuances of what, you know, what prevented them from participating, and so that we can address that moving forward. An example of the program design survey is, please indicate how interested you are in incorporating the following into a home improvement project to improve water quality in Lake Wachem, and also indicate which of these you have already done. And again, the answer list was quite long, and trying to get down into the nuances so we could craft the project or the program moving forward. So, now I'm going to switch gears and talk about the aquatic invasive species program. We're in the third year of this program. It's a mandatory inspection program, so we inspect boats in both Lake Wachem and Lake Samish to prevent transfer of aquatic invasive species into our lakes. In 2015, the program ran from April 25th through September 30th. We had 15 inspectors and conducted almost 9,000 inspections at Lake Wachem and Lake Samish combined. Permits are required for all watercraft, including non-motorized hand-carried watercraft and seaplanes. And we have increased the hours of operation at Lake Samish. And then we also have an AIS online awareness course, and we had, I think, about 1,500 people participate in that, and everybody that participates in that gets a reduction in their permit fee. It's a good opportunity for educating, getting the word out. So, like I mentioned, we had 15 inspectors, and they went to four different launches. There's three in Lake Wachem and one in Lake Samish. And you can see the Bloedel Donovan, we had the majority of our inspections happen at Bloedel Donovan. At the Southern Valley Marina, we had 154 inspections, and South Bay, 268. We also did inspections at our office on Nevada Street for people that wanted to stop by on their way to the lake. And then our staff also goes out to private residences to inspect their boats. We want to make the program as user-friendly as possible and convenient as possible, so we do a lot of visits to residences. And then at Lake Samish, we did about 6... Oh, sorry, 1,628 inspections, about 9,000 boats. And while the staff are out there, there's some downtime sometimes where there's no boats. Sometimes you have 15 boats show up, sometimes you have no boats. And when there's no boats, the staff has had a chance to engage people that are in the park or at the boat lynch for other reasons. And so, we were able to engage about 3,000 visitors to those areas and provide education about what the staff was doing there and what the intent of the program was. So, it was a great educational opportunity. 218 of the boats had standing water that needed to be drained. So, the standing water in a boat that came from another lake is a possible vector containing aquatic invasive species that could get in our lake, so that water had to be drained. And 187 of the boats had aquatic plants that needed to be removed before the boat could go in the water. This is a photo of one of our staff doing an inspection, and this is a photo of an invasive American bullfrog that was found in one of the tanks in one of the boats. This map shows where the boats are coming from. So, the lighter the color, the fewer vessels we had coming from that area. And you can see, most of the vessels are coming from B.C. and Washington. But we do have boats coming from 33 states and provinces and 639 water bodies across the U.S. and Canada. So, this is a cumulative graph that shows... The dark shows Lake Wachem, and the green shows Lake Samish. And it shows the total number of watercraft inspections conducted by our staff in 2013 through 2015. And you can see that there's a big jump between 2013 and 2014, and there's two reasons for that. One is, this number in Lake Samish represents spot inspections, and between... In 2014, we implemented a full program there. And so, you're seeing a bigger number because our full program was operating. And then in 2014, we also included non-motorized watercraft, like kayaks and canoes. So, you can see, as time goes on, we have more and more participants in the program, and I think that's important. I feel like the program has hit a sweet spot in terms of convenience and what we offer and costs, so that participation is slowly increasing. We also do monitoring of the lake, so we're trying to find where we have existing infestations and make sure that we're not having any new species come in. So, the yellow dots in Lake Wachem, these represent places where we did monitoring and just found one or two, but no infestations. And then the yellow clams are areas where we have established infestations. So, this is for Asian clam species. We don't have Asian clams in Lake Samish, which is good. We did do inspections here, and it just shows that we didn't have any clams in those areas. These pictures are pictures of Asian clams. This is milfoil. This is the non-native water lily. This is celery, and this is the yellow flag iris, all of which are invasive. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Gary, and he's going to talk about looking forward and what's going to occur in 2016.
Thanks, Renee. Again, Gary Stoica, Wachem County Natural Resources Manager for the Public Works Department. And as she indicated, I'm going to be talking to you, looking forward, a lot of the same topics that she mentioned. I'm going to... For what happened in 2015, I'm going to be going forward for 2016. So, I'm just going to focus on some of the bigger items, some capital projects, both design and construction that we've got coming up for 2016, as well as go a little bit more next steps for the homeowner incentive program, and a topic that really, she didn't discuss at all, recreation planning, and then some next new things coming up for aquatic invasive So, again, this is the map that... So again, this is the map that Renee just showed a bit ago. And the green is stuff that was finished, capital projects that were finished before 2015. And again, the tan, yellow, I guess it is, were projects that were finished in 2015. So if we're looking at the county areas, there were two big projects that were identified in the five-year plan. One is the Cedar Hills Project located in the Geneva area. This is a project that we're getting significant funding from the Department of Ecology Stormwater Grant. And it's located primarily in the headwaters of Euclid Creek on the south side of Lake Waccaum in Geneva, as you can see there. The treatment area, the capture area, is about 53 acres. And we're looking at, when this project's fully implemented, about 24 pounds of phosphorus will be removed on an annual basis. And what it's going to consist of is installation of some bio-retention swales interspersed along residential streets, some stormwater filter vaults, and some stabilization of an eroded channel. As the Honorable Executive Lous mentioned, we've got a bunch of grant funds for this project recently. And the way the county has been doing this is when we fund the project for what we can afford locally, and then if we get grant funding, we use that to expand and enhance the project. So we're going to be adding, with about $1 million worth of grant funding, we're going to be, excuse me, for this one, it's about $600,000 worth of grant funding, we're going to be adding about $600,000 more to the project than we would have been able to do just on our own. And the other project that we're going to be starting, and again, this is going to be constructed in 2016, and in 2017, but for design in 2016, is this Agate Bay Project on the north shore. Again, this project is still in the, we've just done the preliminary design, so we don't have an actual size and scope of it. But it's roughly around 100 acres we're going to be looking at treating. And again, we got, as the executive mentioned, we got about $1.1 million in grant funding, so we're now looking to possibly expand that area and do more treatment with that outside money. Now we've switched gears from the county to the city projects. As the executive also mentioned, we've got three projects coming up on the city side. The city has had the last couple of years some big capital years, construction years. And so 2016 is going to be a design year for them, that no major capital projects coming up for the city. So these three projects mentioned here, Britton Road, East Oregon Street, and East North Street, are all going to be going through final design this year and slated for construction in 2017. Again, the city is also able to utilize a lot of grant funding from the Department of Ecology. And they were also with this project, they actually contracted just one consultant. So it makes it a little bit more efficient than doing three bids and three RFQs and having three separate consultants onboard. They can use what they learn in other projects and to do all three. The Britton Road Project up here is going to be capturing untreated runoff that currently bypasses existing stormwater facilities. And then the East Oregon Street here is going to be utilizing a city-owned parcel that they already own to treat runoff that otherwise would drain directly to Silver Beach Creek, which is hard to see here, that's Silver Beach Creek, or that would otherwise also enter the lake directly. And then the East North Project over here is capturing a lot of runoff from long driveways and private roads. There it goes. That are kind of east of the project in this area that runs down here, we're going to be capturing a lot of that runoff and provide treatment for flows that normally would bypass the existing treatment system. Switching gears again to go back to what Renee talked about for the homeowners incentive program. As she mentioned, we're going through a transition from a pilot phase to, I guess, refining it. The first five years that we've had it have been great for learning a lot, and we did get a lot of projects done, as she showed. But we really think that there are a lot of enhancements and efficiencies that we can do. So what we're doing in 2016 is we've got about 25 projects in the queue already, which is about all we can handle right now. We're going to be doing those projects this year. In addition, as you can see there, there's a large-scale phosphorus reduction project that we're going to be doing at Silver Beach Elementary School. And we're also, something that we've also always been working on for the last few years is providing technical assistance to local professionals. You can see there are designers and contractors and engineers. A lot of these folks are relatively new to these projects, don't necessarily understand the BMPs, you know, they're landscapers and stuff like that, and other kinds of stormwater engineers. So this is an opportunity for us to provide technical support for them, to help them figure out what we're looking for for these projects, and also helping with permitting and getting them through that part of the project. As I mentioned, we're going to be moving to the next phase. And Renee mentioned, showed you all of that, all the surveys that were done. The next phase of that is focus groups. And that's going to be, I think actually, the focus groups themselves just recently wrapped up, but we don't have the data back from the consultants. So within the next month or so, we'll be getting that data back from those focus groups. And then when we get all that data back, we'll develop recommendations for the 2017 And then I'll develop technical materials and outreach strategy for that program to launch in 2017. So staff is going to be spending a fair amount of time going to HIP 2.0 or whatever you want to call it. Let's see, I think that's all about, I'm going to say on that part. So again, if we go to the focus groups, the city, the contractor for the city engaged in three focus groups. Two were a subset of groups that included residents from uplands and shorelines, and one was a focus group that just included shoreline property owners. And it goes hand-in-hand with the surveys. The survey get you a certain amount of information, and the focus groups are where you can really drill down and find out more information, specific information from people. These focus groups were run by a neutral third party, so it wasn't county staff or city staff. It provides, when you do that, it provides the folks with a more comfortable setting where they don't feel like that they're trying to give answers that they think you're expecting. And also, this person was a non-expert, so that's also very useful. They weren't somebody who knew a lot about HIP or very much at all, actually. But that's actually good because then sometimes when you have somebody that's an expert, they can inadvertently kind of point people in directions where they think that the answers should go. So having that, having a non-expert there helps with that. And actually, with the homeowners, excuse me, with the focus groups, we actually had, because of the number of properties inside and outside of the city, we actually had a much higher participation from county residents versus city residents. And that's just a nature of where the properties are located. And also qualitative results, that's what you get from focus groups. You can only get so much information from surveys when you ask people to rate certain things or to fit into boxes of answers that you think would be the appropriate answers. When you do a focus group, you can actually find out in their words what specifically is preventing them or inhibiting them from participating and what problems do they see. And one thing I will also add, that's actually not on a slide here, but I mentioned the big capital projects, and then we've got this individual property owner, homeowner incentive program. So we've got kind of two bookends on things. And what's missing in between is kind of these smaller scales capital projects. And city and county staff are going to be talking this year about how can we capture those small areas, areas where it doesn't really, you don't have a lot of runoff that really directs into a stormwater system, but you might have runoff from five or 10 homes that might be able to find ways to treat that in a smaller swale or some sort of medium-sized project. It still would probably be more in the line with a capital project, and it probably would be done in public right away. But it wouldn't be what we consider these bigger capital projects. Okay, switching gears to a topic that we actually hadn't talked about for 2015, but I'm going to cover some of that here. You know, it's the reconvenance lands. In 2014, Waccaum County, the DNR finalized the reconvenance of about 8,800 acres of county, excuse me, of land from the county for park use and water quality. And most, by and large, almost, not all of it, but most of that is in the Lake Waccaum watershed. And you can see here that the county has designated those two areas, the one on the east side of the lake, the Lake Waccaum part, and the one that's on the west side of the lake, the Lookout Mountain Park. The Parks, the County Parks Department started a process in 2015 and held several community meetings to solicit feedback on a trail plan and help craft that plan in a way that's compatible with the overall mission of protecting water quality. This was a pretty substantial effort. A lot of people are very excited about this reconvenance. Here's kind of the vision that the Parks folks used when looking at the future of the park. They want to allow the lands to, by and large, mature into an older-growth natural forest function that benefits water quality. They're looking at a trail plan that's going to establish non-motorized use only and based on recreation that's compatible with watershed protection efforts. So things that may be compatible with that that they're looking at is hiking and biking and horseback riding, primitive backcountry camping, and viewscapes and other unique features. And then they also want to provide connectivity to existing trails, parks, and communities. That was the overall vision of the process. And there's a picture of the plan there. But the planning elements here, the report here that's shown onto the side here was actually issued in November 2015. And it took into consideration public comment, technical guidance from other agencies, stakeholder input, and a variety of information on recreation, ecology, geology, and watershed management. And this, again, kind of looks, shows you the planning elements that the Parks Department looked at. So they're looking at providing a diverse recreational trail network, and they're looking at a variety of experience and challenge levels, again, that are compatible with protecting the watershed. They wanted to concentrate development, you know, such as trailheads and that sort of thing, to where things are already existing disturbances. They're trying to incorporate existing user-built trails where appropriate and where they add value to the trail network. And they want to protect by and large the forested areas such as Austin Creek and Smith Creek to benefit water quality. So those are kind of the elements that they incorporated into this planning process. So the process started, well, it started probably in early 2015, but the first community meeting they had was at March 18th. And this was a meeting that was designed just to bring people in and kind of give them the vision and give them the idea, but there was no plan yet. And so the idea was the community would help shape that plan. And so they provided the recreational opportunities that we talked about, the constraints and the conceptual trail plans, and presented that to the community to get their input. And then they went back, took that information, and came up with a draft trail plan, which is what I showed you a minute ago. And then they released that in November 5th with another community meeting. As you can see, these meetings were very well-attended. And that's where they brought out the plan and said, "Here's the plan, what do you guys think?" And opened a public comment period, which closed, I think, at the end of November. And so now they're in the process of taking that draft plan, taking all the input that they have from the public comment period and the input that they've got at that public meeting, and refining the plan. So what's coming up in 2016 is that the Parks Department is going to be finishing the environmental assessment, finalizing the draft trail plan, and then reviewing that plan with the county council. Just a note here that this plan, for anybody who's interested and hasn't seen it, is available on the county website for anybody who wants to peruse that. So the idea is to wrap up all this stuff in 2016. And then to revisit the AIS program again, what's coming up in 2016? Well, our kickoff date for inspections is April 23rd, and we're looking for a season that's going to last through September 30th. I think April 23rd is the start of fishing season, which is traditionally the kickoff of boating season and the high use of the lake. However, the staff have already done quite a number of inspections, both at, I'm not sure if you've been at residence yet already, but certainly people have brought their boats into Nevada Street and had that done. So quite a bit of inspection is already done. They've already hired the 16 seasonal AIS inspectors. They're being trained and ready to go. We're going to be looking at increased hours of operation at the Lake Samish, South Bay, and Southern Valley boat launches. And we still have the online AIS awareness course, and that's going to continue to offer the discounts on the AIS permit fee. One of the things that we will be doing with that, though, is towards the end of this year is we're going to, this course is now three years old, and like any online course and that sort of thing, it starts to get a little stale after a while. So after this three years, we're going to take kind of a comprehensive look at that course and see what we can do to freshen it up, make sure we've got current information on there, and make sure the public is still finding it useful and interesting. Another big thing that's going on this year is the city's starting electronic data collection. Right now, or actually, not now, last year and the previous years, as boats came into the launch, the inspectors took down a lot of information on paper. And then after their shifts at the end of the day or at the end of the week, they had to take that information back to the office, and all that had to be transcribed into the system. Now they're going to be having iPads or something similar to that. And a lot of that information is going to be just taken down right then, and it will save a lot of staff time and should make things a lot more efficient. And with that efficiency, one of the things that they're looking to do, we're looking to do, is expand our monitoring program. Renee showed those locations, we did some monitoring. We've not been able to do a lot of monitoring so far just because of staff limitations, but we're hoping that with freeing up some of this staff with some of this electronic data collection and a few other efficiencies, that we can have a more comprehensive monitoring program so we can see, catch invasive species, monitor where they're going, and just get a better overall feel for the effectiveness of the program. I think that's it. And now we're going to have the Honorable Claire, wherever he went, there he is, to kind of give you a brief update on what's coming up for the Lake Waccaum Policy Group as we go into 2016.
Oh, that slide is, Brian, the county slide.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, Brian Heinrich, City of Bellingham. And over much of the past year, I spent some time on an advisory committee related to aquatic invasive species as directed by the legislature in 2015, and in partnership with Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Washington Invasive Species Council. And our direction was to prepare a funding recommendation for a statewide AIS program. We began with some estimates from Fish and Wildlife on what it would take to create a statewide program. They put the funding need at approximately $5.2 million, and those broke out approximately in the following ways: $1.8 million for prevention, $1.2 for enforcement, a ballast water management program at just over $1 million. And I think of particular importance to us is a local management grant of $1 million. During the course of discussions, and I think Mr. Gardner handed out the draft, I see it there, in the early pages, you'll see who comprised the membership group. It was, the City of Bellingham, obviously, were representing municipal interests. There were folks from shipping vessel community ports, there were a variety of recreational users, some environmental folks as well, and industry, PUD, and irrigation districts. So it was a nice mix of folks, all who have an interest in AIS and the nexus and how it interplays with their own functions. So from our conversations, we developed eight guiding principles. One of those, specific, so specific in terms of amount, activities to fund and performance measures, transparency, efficiency, wanted stable and reliable, so not dramatically swinging back and forth over time, sufficient to cover the program need, equitable amongst the back and forth over time, sufficient to cover the program need, equitable amongst the users and the beneficiaries. And that ended up ultimately being a bit of a sticking point with our recommendation. I'll come back to that. We wanted to minimize adverse consequences, we didn't want to shift economic activity or deter recreational access. And then finally, and probably most importantly, we wanted to be able to implement whatever the recommendation is. Again, during these conversations, one of our goals was the concept of a shared investment. So how the dollars to fund the program would be generated, we saw value in the general fund funding this effort because one of the ways that we put it is if you use a light switch in the state of Washington, you benefit from an invasive species-free environment. So everyone benefits. User fees, there's obviously a number of users, different waterways, and public and private partnerships. So the ways that those would be accomplished, again, going back to the general fund concept, the PUDs, those that generate electricity, they have an existing public utility tax. It's very complicated, but it is identified as a potential source. The fee-based user funding is probably the most expansive, so you have recreational boaters, including small watercraft, commercial watercraft and seaplanes, the shipping vessel community, out-of-state watercraft, commercial transport and pet and aquarium distributors or owners. And the reason those folks came up, and I just quickly, the City of Lacey did an African clawed frog eradication about a year ago. It's actually, they're incredibly, they have a huge appetite and they will eat just about anything. So, and how they get into the system is via aquariums and pet stores. And then finally, private-public partnerships, irrigation districts, and then really looking at, are there other beneficiaries of this that we didn't identify? So we kept that as a bit of a placeholder. So the recommendation that we made, and I'll admit, when you have a group of that size and those varied interests, it is a bit incomplete, so I acknowledge that at the front end here. All fee-based were identified as contributing $500,000 to start. That the group would recommend that the legislature fund 2.5 million of general fund dollars to the effort. And if you do the math very quickly, that leaves us about $2 million shy of the recommended funding measure. That will be the work of the legislature as this recommendation goes forward in identifying how they close that gap if they accept the fee-based amount and the general fund amount. And I'll just go back and say that the shipping vessel community and, to some degree, the ports were concerned over staking their participation in this effort, largely driven by some uncertainty around federal regulations. They were very concerned, if you go back to one of our guiding principles, about not being duplicative. They're concerned that there's a number of federal regulations moving forward around invasive species, around ballast water management. They didn't want to commit to a funding source that would essentially have them paying twice. That was not shared broadly across the group, which is why the funding recommendation is somewhat incomplete. This recommendation has been approved by the Washington Invasive Species Council. It will go to the legislature by June 1st. The legislature needs to complete some work that they have going right now before this gets in front of them, but this will, we believe, come back to the legislature in the next session. And I think, as you're all aware, funding an AIS program is on our shared legislative agenda, so we'd like to keep it there and continue to advocate for this type of funding. And I think a couple of things that were borne out of the discussions is that the work being done here and the jurisdictional cooperation is seen as a model, one that's scalable to those that are interested in doing so. So if there is a statewide program, this is the one we have here at Lake Waccaum, Lake Samish, is one that's seen that could be replicated statewide. And so I want to thank, you know, obviously, the folks around here and the executive leadership, but also the staff who have done such a fantastic job and make this program happen. So I'd be happy to, I don't know if this is a time for questions or not, but I'd certainly be happy to answer any.
Yeah, I think we're going to open it up now for questions for any of the presenters that have given in. Thank you for, yeah, go ahead, Claire.
So back to this. I just wanted to let you know there's some things happening that are teed up for 2016 that haven't been mentioned yet. Robert Matthews, Institute for Washington Studies, they created an annual report of water quality in the lake. She wasn't able to be here tonight, so she's going to make herself available either at the policy group meeting or to the councils and the commission as requested. The TMDL, we're told on, by good authority, that EPA has accepted the TMDL plan and its routing for signatures. There was some chance that it also would have been done by this evening, but that's not occurred. I'm bringing it up to tee this up again for your consideration because when the plan is received, we will have six months or so to get a response plan back to DOE and EPA. And we've worked on that last year, as you might recall, the timeframe that we were going to commit to and the funding that we were going to commit to long-term. We also have a monitoring component to that that we need to figure out and then revisit the model that will inform how we're doing and what the target is. After the hip market research is done, that will also be coming back to the policy group first probably, and then to the councils as needed to explain what the HIP2 program is going to be and how that will be designed. Then, of course, we'll have the AIS program update towards the end of the year, what the 2017 program will look like. So now...
We have questions.
Now we have. First of all, I'd like to thank all the presenters, that you guys did an awesome job, so good, way to go. Questions? We'll start kind of on this side of the room and work our way around. Anybody here have questions? Ms. Brenner?
I'll do the quick ones.
Can you turn on your microphone and get close to it?
Tell me what to do, and I'm, ah, there, thanks. I've got some just quick ones on page, well, page four of this Lake Waccaum Management Progress Report we got. It talks about actions and progress and all in 2015, but the first one just has acres protected to date. How much more have we done protecting acres besides 2015? Like, is that just for that?
Okay, then, let me answer, and then I'll see if it was your question.
Okay.
Okay. So the number there is the total acreage that's been protected by the city's watershed acquisition program.
I know that.
And the park program.
Year, but year, by year.
This, in 2015, we didn't purchase any new properties.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay.
Okay, wait a sec. Somewhere in here, we talked about the costs, but it, a lot of it didn't tell about the revenues that we're bringing in on that same page. And I was just kind of wondering, it was for 2015, I don't know, oh, here it is, 2015 expenditures, including capital projects and stuff. But one of the things, the AIS program, it might have been in here and I just didn't see it, but is there a number of what we brought in in 2015?
We didn't include revenue numbers in here for any of the programs. Stormwater has, you know, we have the stormwater fee and the stormwater fund, and we have grants coming in. If you want that information, we can get it to you separately.
I'd love it, thanks.
Okay, and just to be clear, you just want it for the AIS program?
Yeah, I don't know where else we're bringing in revenues.
What was, 135?
It's on page 11.
Oh, it's on page 11.
Page 11 of this thing?
Yeah.
Okay. And speaking of that, can we get copies of the slides for today? And also, this bill happened sign is out there that people can call the hotline and all. I think it would be helpful, too, to put either website or email address, too, because that would be neat for people to be able to do it that way if they can. Yeah. It is, what?
I know it is.
Oh, okay. Alrighty. And just a second, I'll go really fast. It talked about the administration, part about the administration and expenditures. They either, it's 80,000, and, oh, it's on page 16. They either seem kind of high or kind of low. If it's all kind of staff or all kinds of things, city, county, and the water and sewer district, seems a little low, but if it's on projects, I'm not sure what, I mean, it still seems low. Expenditures. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's an estimate of how much time staff spends organizing, going to meetings and setting projects up and things like that.
Oh, okay, just, yes, not for staff hired and by the hour, but just when they're specifically involved.
Yeah, right.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Could someone speak to what we're doing regarding the existing infestations of aquatic invasive species? What are we doing to eliminate those?
What we're doing to eliminate the current infestations?
Correct.
We discovered the Asian clams a few years ago. We have gone out and we're trying to track or monitor at least the extent of those colonies that we've discovered. We've done a lot of research trying to determine if there is a control strategy that we can employ in the lake that has some certainty of success and also won't do any more damage to the ecosystem. Some of the control strategies that are nationwide that are being used are chemical, chemical, yeah, they use chemicals. And then some of them will go in and they'll put down these mats that try to suffocate the species that they're trying to get rid of, and other ones dig them all up. None of those seem appropriate, especially the chemicals don't seem appropriate for the lake, but they haven't had that great of success with any of those measures for us to put the money in to try it here. When we see, as we continue to monitor the research that's being done nationwide, we'll keep our eyes open for something that's working that is cost-effective and they don't have to keep doing year after year.
And would you mind sending me the details on the different technique?
The details of what?
The different techniques for control.
Sure, yeah.
Mr. Sidhu and Mr. Wymer.
I had a question about the HIP program. Is it giving actual dollars or tax board? Like, what does really entail? That's one part of the question. The second part is that I saw that map with blue pins and red pins. So you have a process of helping an individual homeowner. What is the, like, timeframe? Like, you contact the first contact until it gets implemented. There must be some kind of timeline, or is it, can you just explain that? How does that process goes on?
Let me make sure I understand your question. You're asking what the timeframe is between...
The first one is HIP program, what does it entail? Homeowner's incentive, what is the incentive? Is it actual dollars given to them?
Yes.
Or is it technical assistance?
Both.
And what kind of dollars we give to individuals? 500, 5,000?
It can be up to 6,000. So it's two different conversations, right? So I'm talking in terms of what we did in 2015, but what we do going forward is still undecided because we're looking to find out the results of the market research. So up till 2015, or sorry, including 2015 and the projects that we'll be implementing this year, the homeowners can get up to 5,000, up to $6,000, depending on what BMPs they install in what order and how much phosphorus treatment we actually get. And then they also get technical assistance.
Is it based on, like, we're going to give you 20% off your, like, if the homeowner comes up with the program, costs $20,000, and you have $6,000 limit? I'm just trying to see that how we spend that money. Is it that some kind of basis of percent or some kind of basis of just how much phosphorus they're going to contain?
I'm going to have, I'm going to have one of our staff members come up that has all the technical knowledge on this. Eli, do you want to come answer this question?
I'm looking for a simple answer.
He can provide it.
Just like some kind of criteria.
You should have asked me.
Thank you. To answer your question briefly, homeowners are provided a reimbursement for project expenses up to $6,000 if they do a large project. And generally, it's 100% for materials and 75% for labor. So if they hire someone to do the labor, 75% reimbursable.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wymer.
I guess this is on. I didn't quite understand how we were using the grant funds for big capital projects because it was stated that we were going to do these projects anyway, but then we got grants so we could do them even better. Does that mean we were going to do a medium-quality job to begin with, but we got a grant, so we're doing a good job now? Or how are we, how are we using the money to expand what we were going to do?
So for each of the project I talked, each of the projects I talked about, we were able to bring in grant money. And so the projects were in the budget as though we were paying for them for the most part. And then staff has been really successful in bringing in grant money. And so some of the projects were funded 50% by grants, some of them by 75%.
So it was the same project? It didn't get better because we got grant money?
Not necessarily. I mean, I'm sure there's some of that. Sometimes when you have more money, you can do a better project, but by and large, the project, do you want to add to this?
Yeah, because it may be different between us and how we did it in the city and county. Yeah. So for the county, we have been able to use, when we get more grant money than we projected, then we use that grant dollars to enhance the project. You know, you put out a grant application and you kind of have a very preliminary design, and so you, and you have a budget, and you kind of build it based on that. But if you get more money, then you can say, okay, well, what more can we do here? Can we include a larger area than we originally thought we had the money for? And mostly, that's what we've been doing. And I bring that up because you may recall that, I guess it's been two years already, when we talked about, you know, the 50-year timeframe for the TMDL, the county committed to using local dollars to get that 50-year timeframe, and then we would enhance the, we would enhance that schedule based on grant funds. So if we got grant funds, then we would do something more. And originally, we were thinking about probably we would do an extra project that we didn't have slated, but since these things kind of run on like a three-year, you go preliminary design the first year, final design the second year, construction the third year. That's, it's not easy to ramp up really quickly like that. So what we found is it's more cost-effective actually to take your project that's only had the preliminary design and then go ahead and expand it quite a bit in final design and construction.
Expand the area.
Expand the area, or if there's a better treatment system or a higher...
What we did in Cedar Hills and Ecket Hills is stay on treatment area. Folks don't get 20 pounds, we get 40?
Yes. Yep.
Councilmember Murphy.
Well, I just really wanted to express appreciation for the staff from the county and the city that continually works on these issues on behalf of our governments. And I also explicitly wanted to express appreciation for Brian Heinrich for representing our city and our community on the Aquatic Invasive Species Funding Advisory Committee. So hi, Shkasi, I'm thankful.
Commissioner Casey, I'd like to understand how you enforce your AIS program with respect to transient seaplane.
Well, I'll have to let the...
We started working with the Seaplane Pilots Association three years ago, identifying the threat that they posed and what the association is doing to, within their membership, to try to reduce that threat. And we're convinced that they have a good program, it's a national program, they have a very active program here in Washington State. We've been in touch with them every year. We have an agreement that their pilots will, that they take part in, and they have, we have signatures on some of them. And we have just been talking to them again this year on how to, how to up the numbers of the pilots that are giving us their flight logs and that are reporting in when they land on Lake Waccaum. So we recognize and they recognize that we have a ways to go, but what we have discovered through this process is that not a lot of the pilots that are here on Lake Waccaum travel outside the state very regularly. Some of them do, and some of them travel to lakes that are of concern to us. But a lot of them island hop or go over to eastern Washington, and it's a weekend, a weekend trip or something short and local. So we have recognized that that's one of the, one of the vectors, possible vectors, and we've taken the steps that we can so far to address that, so.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'd like to have a little bit more information about how the number is derived for pounds of phosphorus removed. Is it calculated? Is it based on... Is it based on, uh, real numbers, or is it, how, how close is it? Also, are we going to do any follow-up to be able to confirm or, uh, you know, get more adjustment to these numbers over time?
Yeah, those are excellent questions. I'm gonna have Eli come up again and talk more about the, how it's calculated. My understanding is that, um, a lot of the, the stormwater filtration systems that we're installing are proprietary systems, and they've been through extensive testing through the Department of Ecology, and so the numbers that we're presenting are the numbers that we're told will reduce the amount of phosphorus. Do you wanna expand on that?
That's, it's a great question, and it's something that will be adapted and, and changed over time as new information, uh, comes in. But essentially, when we look at a developed area, uh, in the Lake Wackam watershed or, or another area where we know what the soils are like, we know what the slope is like, and we have some monitoring data, uh, we use information that comes from the Department of Ecology to characterize how much phosphorus comes off of different land uses in a year. And so it'll vary, uh, based on rainfall data, it'll, it'll vary from site to site, but we have a general average. And then we know, so we know how much phosphorus is coming through the area we're gonna put a system in. Then we install the system and we know that it has a certain efficiency that's an average efficiency, so in a big storm, it might work less efficiently than it does in a small storm, but on average, it might remove fifty or seventy, or the better technology today can remove up to eighty-seven percent of phosphorus, and that's all tested through the Department of Ecology and approved. And if a manufacturer wants to get a filter approved from the state, they have to demonstrate how much phosphorus it can remove. Uh, so those are how those calculations come down, and as we learn more about how much phosphorus comes off a different type of land use, uh, a lawn versus a forest versus a driveway, um, we can determine combinations of those, uh, how much phosphorus is in the water, and then apply that same efficiency factor to it.
So will there be any, uh, actual verification of these numbers over a period of time in order to see, uh, if the manufacturer's literature, et cetera, you know, actual storm water so that we can look, uh, especially if we're going to be expanding these types of systems, as to whether or not we're really getting the value that, uh, we're supposed to?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a, that's a great question, and especially with the Academy project you saw today and the Huntington Shepherdson project, the, the biggest project for the county and the biggest project for the city this last year, uh, our grant agreements actually require pre and post-construction monitoring for both the amount of water and the amount of phosphorus. So we'll test the water upstream of the facility and downstream to see how much phosphorus has been removed through that and report that back to the Department of Ecology, uh, as the funding agency, and we expect that they'll take that information and apply it to their, uh, assumptions.
So there's, uh, there's quite a few expectations there. I don't know, uh, who's going to be doing that sampling and analysis, but is there a plan for doing that on each project?
Yeah, uh, we have to, we sign what's called a, a quality assurance for project plan. Uh, yeah, and Steve can help me there. And, uh, that, it goes actually through, uh, laboratory analysis, so we have people in our lab that actually do water quality testing for wastewater or for stormwater that approve that method of testing to say that, yes, this is the best way of testing for phosphorus or fecals or oils or whatever it is they're trying to remove, and that the method that's being used, the day they're collecting the sample, the amount of water that's flowing, when they collect the sample, that all of that meets within a certain range of, of, uh, of criteria so that there's not any samples that are taken outside of, of the acceptable range, so all the data tends to, to be, uh, consolidated and work well with the existing testing that was done by the Department of Ecology.
Uh, one final question regarding this is that, uh, the Academy Road, uh, project, for example, when can we expect to see some, uh, real performance numbers off of that?
Great question. Um, they went online last year, I don't, um, and the city hasn't accepted it yet, so I'll let the county address it.
I, I can't give you a date, but it's, it's, it's still, we're still running through some, uh, tweaking on the system, so it's not quite finished yet, so probably later this year? Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Donovan.
Uh, this is sort of following upon Commissioner Ford, ask Eli, you might wanna step there. In terms of measuring the, well, I have two, two questions here. One is, except for talk about a hundred pounds here or forty pounds there, so these are coming from models or estimates of what you expect here and there. How do I compare a hundred pounds of benefit to like how much we need to get out and like whatever the total goal is? And, and kinda related to that, on all the maps that were up here, so all these projects are on the not lake side of North Shore, they're not on the lake side of Lake Wackam, so all that property along the lake, are they not eligible for the HIP, and do we have any estimates of how much we're not getting because of those places?
I'll, I'll take a shot at it first. Um, so to, to work backwards, the, the shoreline properties, people who own property along the shoreline, uh, were eligible for the first round of, of HIP. Uh, we didn't see a large, uh, participation factor with those, participate, with the people who live on the shoreline. Many reasons, uh, a quarter of them may be vacation rental properties or second homes. Uh, we've got a lot of turnover in the lake, especially there, so, um, we're working with those challenges to figure out how we can best, uh, address shoreline properties. So, um, we estimate that watershed-wide shoreline areas might be up to twenty percent of the land area that's developed around the lake, uh, rough number there, but that's an estimate. So we know that if we need by the TMDL to reduce runoff by eighty-seven percent or treat eighty-seven percent of land, um, if twenty percent of it is on shoreline, we can't get to eighty-seven without working with the shoreline property owners. Uh, but to talk to, to the amount of phosphorus or what does, what does a pound of phosphorus mean? Um, estimates in freshwater, uh, from various places around the country, a conservative estimate would be that one pound of phosphorus can grow a hundred pounds of algae under, under the right conditions. And so, um, we look at the full scale of the lake in the area you saw today on the map, uh, we're looking at something about seven hundred pounds of phosphorus need to be reduced to meet our goal, but on a lake-wide scale, uh, it could be a lot more than that, and as the TMDLs finalize, we'll have some numbers to go, uh, with that. But if we, uh, current estimates now, we remove about four hundred pounds out of the seven hundred to eight hundred that need to be removed from, from the basin, the most developed basin. Um, so we're, we're approaching halfway there, uh, but we still have a, a long way to go. Um, but now, since treatment systems have been in place, we can come back later and say we put something in that only removes fifty percent of phosphorus. In five years, we might have better technology, we can come in and retrofit that to something that removes eighty-seven percent, and those numbers go up without any more areas filling in on the map.
If you were asking why the maps don't show the shoreline, it's because we do public facilities along the shoreline, you have to use pumps to get back up to the facility. So that's why we're depending on the HIP programs to, to treat the shoreline.
Councilmember Hamel.
Uh, I have an AIS question for, um, Mr. Heinrich. Um, you broke down the five point two million dollar ask, um, prevention enforcement, and you had mentioned there's a one million dollar component for local management. I'm just wondering what, what that, what the effect would be for our local program here, seeing as we're the only, um, AIS local management program with a fee in the state of Washington?
You know, that's a good question. I think that's actually one probably for the various policymakers here in terms of if additional revenue was coming into the program, uh, what that would mean. Perhaps it speaks maybe to Carl's question about if you have more dollars into the program, do you expand, do you expand that program? Do you look for those grant dollars to, um, add a, a different service or reduce maybe the, the contribution by the various entities into the program? So I, I think that's really a question. Be a good problem for us to, to have, I think, to try and, try and answer that.
Councilmember Lulquist.
Thanks, Barry. I'll take my turn. Actually, I'll start by saying when I, I first got on the council, I dove pretty heavily into Lake Wackam for a couple of years and was more knowledgeable about what our jurisdictions have been doing, and I've kinda stepped away from that recently. And so this was probably the most valuable, um, one of these joint meetings for me in a long while to, uh, learn in more detail about what exactly, uh, the city, the county, and the water district and, and the other agencies are doing. So this is very valuable for me. I have kind of a small question that has to do with the county's trail plan, because I'm not involved in that effort. Um, I'm a hiker, and I really wanna use those trails when I go in, but I also know that hiking trails can be quite damaging, uh, you know, in certain areas and along waterways. So I'm just wondering, in the trail plan, what efforts were taken to, uh, keep those trails away from areas which might particularly sensitive for water quality? I'm thinking really right along the, the creeks themselves.
We have, uh, members from our Parks Department here.
Parks Commissioner, Parks Director.
Our Parks Director.
Mike McFarland, Wackam County Parks. On the park plan itself, as far as the trails plan, it's not so much keeping away from the water as much as watching what of those slopes those are on, so trying to keep those grades, um, looking at those areas where we have a history of, uh, mass wasting events that occur out there on the landscape and trying to avoid some of those. Um, where we do have to cross stream corridors, uh, in those particular instances, looking at, uh, best management practices when we develop those, so those crossings may be hardened so that reduces the runoff in those. And then on top of it, the most critical thing, uh, not only with the trails but also the road system out there, is the ongoing maintenance and monitoring on those. So that's kind of the strategy there.
Thank you.
Ms. Vargas.
I'm pretty immersed in this, so I don't have a lot of questions, but I will say that, um, one of the things that we asked and we tasked the, the staff and the team to do was provide a report that was easy to digest, to understand, that anybody could look at. Um, and I have to say that you did an amazing job. I'm really impressed the way this report out was done, and in the five years I've been intending these presentations, I feel like this is the best that's ever been. And I think that's partly to do with the collaboration, uh, with the three parties involved, and the information you provided is really excellent. So thank you because anyone can understand this, and that was an achievable, not such an easy achievable goal, and I think you did it, so thank you for your work.
Well, thank you for the kind words, and we did take steps, um, to make it even better this year, and all the credit goes to Teagan Ward. I shouldn't say all the credit. Our staff and, and part of what I've enjoyed in my new, new job is interacting with the, the joint staffs on this product, on the Lake Wackam management project, and the staffs have been incredible in getting information together quickly, both for the presentation and for that report.
Okay, any last questions before we move into, yes, Councilmember Barker?
Uh, I have a question. Bear with me, because I'm coming from a different angle, and I, I mentioned this at our last council meeting. I think sometimes when we start creating policies like this, uh, we have some unintended consequences, and I know nobody's here from planning, but in looking at all this, I'm, I'm really concerned that the purchase of the reconveyance land, um, the limit in being able to develop, we're starting to see some really increased costs in housing and some really limited opportunities for all kinds of different housing options in the area. So I'm, I'm just interested if this committee has maybe thought of also making a plan of how are we gonna make sure these areas, everybody can live in them and not only, um, kind of a, a more exclusionary type? So I wondered if you guys have had those conversations as staff, or if we're gonna be talking about those things?
Um, I'll take a stab at this. My, we haven't had those conversations pertaining to the Lake Wackam management program, per se, because the Lake Wackam management program is focused on the ten program areas that we've talked about and is focused on the water quality of the lake and prevent, protecting the city's drinking water source and the, the drinking water source of the people that live along the lake. Um, in terms of making sure that there's affordable housing in the, in the watersheds, which is what I think you're looking for, I think that would be a more planning-specific conversation.
Commissioner Sitrone.
Is that, is that on now? Um, I've, I've expressed this before, and I'm gonna express it again, which is, I guess, slight, um, confusion and, and concern about funding. Um, as a, as someone who lives in the watershed, I, I certainly benefit from all of the, the, um, projects that are done and the grants that are, um, found and the, and the funding that comes generally from everyone in the county, but I'm also a little uncomfortable with the fact that as someone who lives in the watershed and, and, um, this is true of everyone else in the watershed who, who lives in, um, outside of the city of Bellingham, we, we don't pay anything more than anyone else who lives, say, in Linden or Birch Bay for those projects in the watershed. And I'm, I, I would like to know if the county is considering, um, looking at implementing a stormwater district to be able to better, uh, focus the, the costs and benefits to those of us who do live in the watershed. Um, I think that it, it's both an issue of fairness, I think it also offers an opportunity to, um, uh, potentially accelerate the, the, the funding window to meet the TMDL, which we've currently, I think, put at forty years, and I think with a stormwater district, there would be the possibility of, of implementing, uh, funding that could, that could narrow that scope so that we aren't passing this problem on to, to the next generation, or at least the funding of this problem on to the next generation. So I'm, um, I, I raise that as a, as a, um, an issue primarily for, for Wackam County Council, because that's, that's your domain. Um, and at the least, would hope that, that it might be incorporated into your current, um, was it ten-year plan that is being developed so that it's at least an option to, to take on? It, um, I, I think it would behoove the council to, to at least look at that, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to our public comment period. Claire, could you grab that signup sheet and hand it to me, please?
There's nobody on it? Leslie McRoberts.
Leslie McRoberts, okay.
Okay, so that means that there's no other question.
Okay, well, we'll just let folks come down and line up whoever wants to speak.
Thank you very much, Marion Bedill, citizen activist on Lake Wackam for how many dozen years or more. I also agree that the presentation in this program looked very slick, very neat, very easy to read by the public, which is a marvelous achievement. That sometimes doesn't give all the details and could, has the possibility of, of shading over some part of the story. Rain gardens is one method of capturing the phosphorus on the downslope, and putting in concrete box vaults is another one. The cost difference of the construction and maintenance on each of those is significant. I don't need it tonight, but I definitely wanna get from you a full comparison of those two alternatives and any other model of the treatment of the phosphorus and the runoff to be sure that we, the customers, are buying a good deal rather than getting stung with something that was more costly because it looked pretty and sounded good. Do you understand? Another element that has worried me from back at the time that Pete Crimmon appointed me to the Reconveyance Review Committee, what was that, twelve years ago, something like that? All of the conversation that I'm hearing is correct and proper about within the land of the, of the forest area that's designated under the reconveyance. Things that's been stuck in the back of my head ever since then is what about that little chunk of land just around the outside of the reconveyance property? I can imagine a re, resort builder and developer sitting there drooling for the day that he can buy that chunk of property and put up his attraction thing on the public property adjacent to the park, which has the park as though it was the front yard. What is the process, the rules, and the capability to block the possibility of additional urban development piggybacking on the edges of the park? That's my essential question. I didn't think so.
Anyone else like to, to testify this evening? Okay, seeing none, that's the end of our agenda. I'd like to, first of all, yeah, I'd like to thank the city of Bellingham for hosting us, it was, it was awesome, and Mayor Linville, Executive Lous, thank you for your, uh, participation, and as the public, thanks for spending your evening with us. We are adjourned. Thank you.